This evening's meeting of the City Council, it's June 5th. We'll take the roll call, please.
Mayor Brinkman?
Here.
Mayor Procham Valdez?
Present.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Here.
Councilmember Elrod?
Here.
Councilmember Fay?
Here.
Councilmember Schlechter?
Here.
We rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, councilor, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Do want to note that we do have a double header tonight. We will have a study session immediately following our regular meeting and the study session will be held in the community room. So now is the moment in the agenda for the public comment. If you wish to address the City Council under public comment, please have signed in on the speaker form. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The City Council is not authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to staff to obtain additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. We know that this evening we have a number of people that would like to speak on one particular issue and we appreciate you coming down. We appreciate your interest in the issue and we definitely are interested in what you have to say in your comments. We do remind you that you will have three minutes. The clock will give you a countdown on that. The clerk lets me know and I will need to abide by that, given the number of speakers that we have. And I also ask that if you are, another speaker has stated your opinion or said what you would like to have said, it's okay to simply let us know that your comments have already been made and we will note that for the record. So I will read the names of the folks that are on here and as I read your name, come down, please give us your address, state your name and address for the record and we'll get started. Bobby Sheffield. Good evening. My name is Bobby Sheffield. I live at 7215 Houston Waring Circle, Littleton 80120. And it's my privilege tonight to represent South Metro Land Conservancy. We're celebrating our 25th year this year. And if you ever wondered what a group of dedicated people could accomplish in 22 years, would you believe over 10,300 acres in Arapahoe County is now natural open space just from what SMLC has done? And I'm going to ask that Phil Walts, who's on our board, hand you out a packet. It's a packet in a bandana, so maybe it's a bandana packet. I don't know. Oh, sorry. And I'd also like to introduce Pat Cronenberg, who's also on our board. Myself and another group, a group of other concerned citizens formed SMLC in 1993. Our first project was partnering with you, the city of Littleton, in securing 18.75 acres of the Newton Trust next to South Platte Park. Since then, we've worked to add the Supercy Buffer, the Enser Buffer, Lee Gulch Open Space, and many others in the South Metro area as well as in Arapahoe County. We've partnered with Trust for Public Lands, Arapahoe County Open Space and Trails, City of Littleton, South suburban Parks and Recreation, South Platte Working Group, Colorado State Parks, and many others. Now, to celebrate 25 years, we wanted to do something kind of different. So we're sponsoring a scavenger hunt in six of our parks. We are partnering with Great Outdoors Colorado, Generation Wild, 100 Things to Do Before Your 12, and Bemis Library. Now, if you haven't done these 100 things, feel free to go ahead and do them. The response has really been fantastic. We have purchased books to give those who finish. We'll also recognize the finishers at our 25th Annual Stampede for Open Space on August 11th, 9 to 12. So come on out and enjoy the fun. I am really excited to see what the next 25 years will bring. With rapid development in our area, our open spaces, natural areas, parks, and trails are going to become even greater assets and face greater challenges. I am sure that together we will rise to the challenge. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak and look forward to seeing you at the stampede.
Thank you, Bobby, and congratulations to the South Metro Land Conservancy. The next is Carl Thomason.
Thomasetti, but that's okay, kind of a tough last name. My name's Carl. I live at 5453 South Julian Street, Littleton, Colorado. And I think I'm talking about something completely different than everyone else is here for, so that might be a nice change of pace for you guys. I want to talk about the Next Generation Advisory Committee that's supposed to be coming up on the docket, I believe, relatively soon here for a vote or possibly...
To a study session this evening.
After a study session, yeah. So I want to come in and use my couple of minutes I may have. So thank you all for being here tonight. The millennial population is currently 25% in the city of Littleton. And no, it doesn't include just those millennials who live in their parents' basement. There's actually 32% of millennials in the workforce currently. That's second only to Generation X. The thing is, is that Littleton's economy and housing will soon be reliant on millennial workers and buyers. That's just the demographics of how this country, this state, and the city of Littleton is changing. This has happened all throughout history. Things are constantly changing. The question then becomes is, how do we prepare ourselves for this new chapter and what role does government play in that preparation? Luckily, our political system is structured as such in a way to allow citizens to create a vision for their future and is one of the greatest examples of experimentation in democracy throughout history. So what I see in the Next Generation Advisory Committee is an experiment in democracy. I envision this committee not only adding a much-needed boost to civic engagement for younger age groups, but also, and more importantly, serving as a board that can advise the city on policy issue from the next generation's perspective, ensuring that there is always a plan for Littleton and its citizens, new and old. And when I say next generation, I don't solely refer to the millennials. That just happens to be what the next generation is right now, but perpetual. Forever and always, there will always be new generations of people. So I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Littleton to be on the forefront of innovative local government that wants to engage all of its citizens and ensure that there's going to be a sustainable plan for the future. I have written down kind of a lot more stuff in terms of what people's concerns may be, and I addressed those, but I think this might not be the most appropriate time to address some people's concerns. I can always be reached out via text message or email, and I will be there for the next study session. But I just truly believe that this is a committee that could be beneficial for the entire city of Littleton. It's going to serve in both a proactive and reactive manner. I've had conversation with many other cities that have had this exact same board in their city, and they're telling me now that their other boards actually use them as a resource to get a different perspective. The moral of the story is, my vision for Littleton is different than my parents', which was different than their parents', and I'm sure your guys' vision is different than your parents', and so on and so forth. And that is just how it is, and we need to prepare for that. And I think that this Next Generation Advisory Board would be a great step in showing how local government can really take a proactive step in creating change and preparing us for these challenges in an organized manner. Thank you very much, and I look forward to what the future may bring.
Thank you very much. Linda Newfinkie.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to talk today a little bit about the Charter and the legislative rules. So if I look at the Charter in Section 27 for council meetings, it says, "The council shall determine the rules of procedures governing meetings." So this is just blown up. And remember, it's the rules of procedures. And this is what the council, City Council member website looked at. You have five different, on your lower corner here, you've got five different documents that you had available, which includes the legislative rules. And if you look today, it doesn't include the legislative rules. So bottom line is, when we actually look at the legislative rules as it existed, because the Charter specifically refers to this rule of procedure or the legislative rules, you have to get it right and you must follow the rules unless you change it. It's not the protocols or standards of conduct, it's not the rules of engagement. So here's your example of the legislative rules. And if you notice, under Section 4, subsection 5, it says you'll be using Robert Rules of Order. And so it says Roberts Rules, not Bob's Rules, not Bobber, not Bobberini. But the bottom line is that it doesn't matter if it's Bob's Rules or Roberts Rules, and it doesn't matter if it's better for the cities. The point is, is that you, as a group, decide what you want to use and state it in this document or create a new document that matches what the Charter requires. So again, if you don't want to use Robert, Bob's Rules, make it happen. Change the legislative rules and vote for the change and make the names consistent with the Charter. So the same rules, legislative rules tells you how you can make changes or additions. I went ahead and I translated it to you. For the Section 5 of legislative rules, you can't change the rules as you wish, you've got to follow these procedures. And you make changes or additions at any regular or special meeting, you need to publicly post any changes along with meeting materials, vote on the changes, and it becomes effective if four members vote for the changes, and changes are effective at the next meeting. So in case that wasn't clear, here's the Chinese opinion translation. But make whatever changes you want, just make it public and transparent to everybody. Follow the process as described in your legislative rules. If you don't like something, change it and don't make things up. Or if you do make things up, follow your legislative rules to make sure you're making things up as documented, public and transparency, so it's no longer making things up. So anyways, the public and council should know what to expect at a council meeting. If you have legislative rules, protocols, and standards of conduct, follow them or change them. Be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker, I'm going to apologize ahead of time. Give it my best shot. Julie? Okay. I will let you pronounce your...
Okay, I know you're not a telemarketer, so it's all good. I'm Julie Rudulovich. I live at 7,000 South Gallup Street, and I'm in 80120. I live in the Ridgeview Division. And as many of you guys know, a lot of you guys have been on a train of emails regarding a concern we have in our neighborhood about an Airbnb that opened up. And so we met as a neighborhood to discuss our concerns, not only as a neighborhood, but how it's, but the impact, potential impact could be on the city of Littleton. And so we put together, we kind of brainstormed some ideas of what our concerns are and kind of put together some suggestions that we'd like to present tonight to the council in a statement that we're going to be reading for you. So there's about 20 of us here representing the neighborhood to talk to you about this. So we're just going to go ahead and read through our statement. If you want a copy of the statement, you can contact me, anybody on the email message, or Mike Price too, has this information. Members of the council, we come here to counsel tonight to encourage you to help us maintain the small-town feel and the sense of community in Littleton, not only in the Ridgeview neighborhood, but in all of Littleton. The comp plan for our heritage neighborhood declares in Goal 1, preserve existing character of the neighborhood, open space, semi-rural atmosphere, and general quality of life aspects, especially the predominantly low-density, single-family residential areas. This is an issue facing many neighborhoods throughout the city. We are faced with a disruptive force in our neighborhood. On a quiet, dead-end street, we have an Airbnb which has been advertised as country in the city and offers accommodations for large groups, sports teams, family reunions, large gatherings. Our area is an R1-zoned area, which requires large lots and promotes peaceful enjoyment of the neighborhood. We do not believe that the current zoning code allows for short-term rentals in our zoning area. We have asked for enforcement of the City, Littleton's zoning code from the city manager and code enforcement. We have submitted questions to the city attorney, who through the community development manager has responded to our request for reinforcement with a memorandum dated June 1st, 2018, in which the community development manager makes the case that the issue of short-term rentals is a complex issue, which I agree. She has indicated that the short-term rentals, such as Airbnb and VRBO, are currently considered accessory uses under the zoning code and are currently allowed in Littleton's residential zoning districts with a provision that such owners obtain a business license through the city. We and the 19 neighbors who met on Sunday night believe that the community development manager is incorrect in her interpretation of the zoning code, and here's why. Number one, under the zoning code, Section 1032, Land Use Table, Section 3.63, Short-Term, Less Than 30 Days, quote, "Tourist houses and other temporary residences renting by the day of week are only allowed in zoning areas B1, B2, B3, T, CA, and R5." Under Section 10310 of the code, short-term rentals clearly include Airbnb and VRBO. They are not permitted in an R1-through-R4 zoning. Community development managers claim that this is an accessory use, which in her words, our Airbnb and VRBO rental areas currently considered accessory uses are allowed in Littleton's different residential zoning areas. However, under the code, under Section 1044, a permitted accessory use...
Julie?
Yes?
You've got your three minutes.
Okay. We'll have the next person come up and continue.
Nice process. Good job. Next is Brad Martin.
Hi. I'm Brad Martin. I live at 7 Meadowbrook Road. We've lived there since the mid-'80s. And I guess I'm just going to continue here what we're doing so that we can hopefully get through this. She's saying, she was talking about what's not a permitted accessory use. So I'll start with A, is clearly incidental to commonly associated with the primary permitted use. The use is operated and maintained under the same ownership or occupant of the premises and is located on the same lot as the primary permitted use. The use does not include structures or structural features inconsistent with the primary structure. The use does not include residential occupancy. And E, if operated partially or entirely, oops, within the primary structure, the use shall not occupy more than 50% of the gross floor space of the structure. If operated outside of the primary structure, the use shall not occupy more than 50% of the lot. So thus Airbnb and VRBO both violate the first, fourth, and fifth requirements under this section for accessory use. The city expressly recognized that a room-board facility is different from a VRBO or an Airbnb, stating after three study sessions of the planning commission in 2016 that the commission needed to address and clarify the difference between rooming/boarding and short-term rental, which we think is Airbnb and VRBO's. The consultant hired by the city in 2016, which was Clarion Associates, LSC, clearly stated in a memo to the city that rooming/boarding refers to the rental of a single bedroom by a homeowner to an individual for a period of time longer than 30 days. Short-term rental refers to the rental of a bedroom or an entire house for the short period of time, such as a weekend or a week, less than 30 days. Currently, rooming/boarding is permitted accessory use, while short-term rental is not a permitted use at all. And that was directly from the Clarion Associates memo to the city. We appreciate the city studying this issue further and gathering citizen input regarding these short-term rentals in all zoning areas and neighborhoods. However, until the zoning code is changed, the city must enforce its existing zoning codes regarding any zoning violation or at the very minimum...
Brad, three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Pam Kennel.
Hi, I'm Pam Kennel. And I live at 4 Meadowbrook Circle in Ridgeview. I'm getting up to speed on this thing. However, until the zoning code is changed, the city must enforce its existing codes regarding any zoning violation or at very minimum declare a moratorium on the licensing of these rental units until the issue is resolved with the citizens of Littleton. If this includes weeds, why not elicit rentals? We look forward to the process involving public outreach and lively discussion culminating in public meetings regarding this issue. This rental in Ridgeview has been advertised... Oh, that's already been read. I'm sorry. If it is not stopped immediately, other property owners may get the idea that Littleton is soft on enforcing its own codes and will not violate this but other codes. If Littleton is selective about the laws they enforce, and who knows what will happen, it is intolerable that the city is granting rights to one homeowner at the expense of the others. We are concerned the city staff is favoring one homeowner who wants to profit by renting their house on a short-term basis over the vast number of homeowners in the neighborhood who are negatively affected. I am going to stop reading this and tell you that I've been there since 1970, excuse me, '98, and I relied on this zoning in this place. I would not have moved into a place that allowed hotels, grocery stores, anything like that. That is what this is doing, is turning our neighborhood into a hotel zone. We are relying on you to make the city, enforce the zoning that is already there. It is so clear. If you read the zoning, it is very clear that that is not allowed. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ron Fisher.
Good evening. I'm Ron Fisher. I live at 3 Meadowbrook Circle, right next to Pam. And I'm straying a little bit from the document we put together. And the reason for that is that we had a home a number of years ago, a very nice home on a lake, and spent a lot of money renovating it, and it was beautiful. The neighbors next door decided it was time to go with a VBRO on their property because they were in dire straits. They needed money. Don't be afraid. No, I, there we go. So they ended up, because they felt they were in dire straits and needed money, to start renting their property through VBRO. They initially advertised it as maybe 12 people. That got up to 16 and 18. And what would happen is very much the same as what I heard happened at 3 Meadowbrook Road. Large parties, multiple cars, lots of noise, fires, which are fine, except we're in a drought and the fire was seven or eight feet tall. I'll expound on that in the sense that where we lived, they would go through the woods gathering sticks and twigs to start the fire, so stripping the earth bare, which I didn't care for. And I don't think out here we want to do that either. There was lots of alcohol involved. People are coming out to party. They're out of town. So there was a lot of noise and drunkenness. Music goes along with that. In terms of public safety or safety for my neighborhood, there are a lot of kids that run around there. And these are a lot of people who don't know the area, driving around on basically a black drop road with no curbs. And I'd be worried that one of the children would get hit. It's entirely possible for that to happen. If they come back at night from dinner down here in Littleton, more than likely they're going to have a fine glass of wine, how about that? Maybe more than one. And they'll come onto a street that doesn't have really streetlights. If somebody's out walking their dog, which all of us have dogs, and all of us walk in the evening and the morning, I don't want to see anybody get hit in the hood. So from my perspective, I've experienced this. I've seen them rent it, and it becomes a money-making operation. They rent 16 people, oh, we've got two more. Well, that's only 100 more a day. They pitch a tent in the yard. I think that's about all I have. Hopefully, I grab something emotional off your, each one of you, to let you know that I've lived through this and I don't want to live through it again. Please enforce the code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ran Rudukovich? No?
My handwriting must be terrible. It's Dan.
It's Dan.
I apologize. I'm going to stray from the script a little bit as well. I live at 7,000 South Gallup Street. I've lived there since 2009. And I think it's made clear even through, about halfway we made it through our statement, that we believe that the code, as currently constructed, is something that can handle this particular situation. Now, whenever we approach the city about this, the response that we've been getting is that the code is, for lack of a better term, ambiguous. And there's no clear definitions in the particular code as to what things actually are. I'm sure that the city has probably brought this to your attention because I'm not, we're probably not the first group to bring this to your attention. What I would ask is that this council clear the code. The first thing that we would ask the council to do is to direct the city manager to place a moratorium on any new business licenses for short-term rentals in residential districts. That would allow the city to do their research, hold public hearings, hold public comment, and ultimately clear up this particular ordinance. This is not something that goes without precedent, even in our own metro area. The city of Golden recently just did this. In January, they put a moratorium on all the business licenses related to temporary rentals. From there, they went through their process, and literally three weeks ago, they issued this ordinance, which I submit for your review. And it's very much... And it's very much like the City of Denver, the City of Boulder, and the City of Aurora's ordinances. All of them have a pretty common theme. First off, there's basically licensing, there's taxation, there's also safety codes that are enforced and inspections. The most important thing to us that we see and that I have seen in this code is that it only provides for the primary residents. That's the only thing that's available to a temporary rental. What that means basically is it goes back to what the spirit of actually what Airbnb was to begin with, which is I've got extra rooms in my house and I want to rent them out on a day-to-day basis. It's, what it's become is it's become basically hotels in residential areas that are unstaffed, that don't have anyone to sort of ride herd over the group. So if the council believes that this is a vague, that the ordinance is too vague for enforcement, even though our neighborhood believes that it can be enforced the way it is, if you do believe that it's vague, we request that you follow some sort of procedure that, as I have laid out. And we also would hope that you would come to the same conclusion that virtually most of the metro area is coming to and enact an ordinance that is similar to these ordinances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pam Chadbourne.
I live at Block and I have from here in District 1. I did want to thank council and staff for making the change, the agenda that says that council can respond to items that are part of tonight's agenda, although I'm going to point out that it's stated negatively with a double negative, and it would be nice to be stated positively. My second item, and I've got three that I hope I can get to. There's a draft for quasi-judicial proceedings tonight. I've got a concern, suggested change, and number five, decisions by the council. The council deliberates and it says makes the decision. I would like it to be changed to say it decides on the appropriate action, and the action could include postponement to a date certain and continuance of the public hearing. Because this council very often seems to say, well, we've got to rush to a conclusion, and you don't. It is more important for government to come to the correct and accurate conclusion and not a quick one, unless there's some other influence which shouldn't be there. Next, I wanted to talk about the study session, a couple of items, the Next Gen item, and also the downtown design standards and guidelines. To me, the problem statement here, there is no problem statement, but let me say, to me, the problem statement being responded to is that a city council member who was newly elected and really beat out the two other at-large competitors by only three or four percentage points, has two friends who really want this committee. Where is the ground-up reason, the problem that we have? We say that in our schools, we have 20, 40 languages. I never see those people here. If there is a problem for access to council and council not getting information, it is with that community. It is not with professional millennials. And if there's a problem with school students having access to council, it should be solved a different way. Now, in my email, which I wrote at the end of March, I refer you to it, the right way to handle this is fair access by all groups, demographics by age and class, and have that group talk about problems, identify problems, integrate answers, and bring that to the council. This is not a function of government. It is unfair, and it should not be considered, and I don't have time for the other stuff. So the other thing I wanted to talk about was downtown design standards and guidelines. I want to make the point that downtown property owners were business owners. There's no residential property owners like myself. So that's a huge problem. And it was a very small group. So when it talks about appropriate to downtown Littleton's futures, that must be defined and documented.
Thank you.
Again, I have other comments. These are not ready for primetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Teresa Tucker.
Hi. I'm Teresa Tucker. I live at 18 Bradbury Lane. I've lived there for 12, or 16 years now. The neighbors in Ridgeview live on large lots and until now have enjoyed a quiet and mutually respectful existence for many years. New homeowners are welcome to the neighborhood and included in neighborhood news. Short-term renters violate the spirit of our neighborhood. The owners of the house being used as an Airbnb did not inform the neighbors of their intent to rent this house via Airbnb, and when asked to cease and desist, refused to do so, saying they had the approval from the city. Under City of Littleton law, owners of short-term rental dwellings must be licensed to do business and pay a tax to the city. Rebecca De Herrera, in the city's tax department, informed us that this house is not licensed for this use, and there has been no sales tax license issued. When asked, city staff said that these types of rentals are unregulated and no enforcement action is taken by the city when complaints are made. Why not? The city manager, when asked why there is no enforcement action being taken while our neighborhood is in an uproar, said the city will respond, but it will take some time based on the other issues we are pursuing. I have also made council aware of your concerns. I would ask for your patience. Why don't we have enforcement in the meantime, especially if this property is not licensed for this use? We do not want to be adversarial regarding this issue, but do feel that the city needs to step in and enforce its zoning laws while it studies the issue. The code does give homeowners like us appeal rights, and if necessary, we will avail ourselves of those. So please, members of city council, direct your city manager to understand the damage these short-term rentals are causing to our neighborhoods and ask him to enforce Littleton's current zoning and licensing laws. Thank you. I also want to add that the roundabout near our house is full of weeds, and that is against city code also. So enforce that one, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. We have no one else signed up for public comment, but if there's someone who would like to make comment, you may do so at this time. And again, please give us your name, address, and you have three minutes.
My head's given a presentation.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Mitch Brown. I am with Jefferson County Public Health at 645 Parfett Street. And so I'll just go ahead and improvise here.
So what I have done is, or what Wendy's doing, is handing out a handout for you guys that has some options that we'll talk about a little bit later. But what I'm here to talk about today is preventing lung cancer from radon exposure. And so we are part of a collaborative of a region of seven counties. It's Arapahoe, Douglas, sorry, Arapahoe, Douglas, Jefferson County, Denver, and Broomfield County. And what we're doing is we're working together to raise awareness of and try to get policymakers and city council members to hopefully vote to help with radon resistance, new construction being adopted. In that seven-county area, roughly 55% of the people that live in Colorado live in those seven counties. So what we're seeing is a lot of people there. And along that front range, in those counties, we have 46% to 58% of homes that have high radon levels. Now, we call above four pico carry per liter a high level, and we find the average to be about 6.4 pico carries per liter, which is roughly about the equivalent for one year in that home of having 300, or sorry, 200 chest x-rays a year. The reason that it was also a concern is because it causes lung cancer. And it's also, in lung cancer and nonsmokers, it is the eighth leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and roughly 10% to 14% of lung cancer deaths in Colorado are from radon exposure. So in our collaborative, what we have been doing is working with building officials, which is why I'm here today, because one of your building officials has presented to us, one of our trainings, that this is something that we could present to you guys. And so what we're hoping is we've given you some options of how you guys can help with our radon aware in that packet. And hopefully, I'll be back in a couple months, and hopefully you guys can find three things that you think would be feasible. So radon awareness is growing. Right now, we have approximately 30 cities and counties across Colorado that have adopted the radon-resistant new construction. And we're hoping that by doing so, we can reduce the radon levels in homes by about So again, as I say, you guys are the ones that have the power to help us with creating radon-aware communities. And again, looking at that roadmap and the options that you guys have, and hopefully you can find some strategies that'll help us with our initiative. So thank you so much for your time, and I will leave my presentation with Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mitch. Anyone else? Carol?
I'm Carol Brezak. I live in the 4th district. Two items tonight. During the reports section of your last regular meeting, the mayor brought up an agenda item that was not on the agenda, and there was a decision made by the council to bring the item back at a future date. Why is it a violation of open meetings law for the council to respond to citizens because an item is not on the agenda? And it's not a violation of the open meetings law when a council member brings up an item that's not on your agenda and gets the equivalent of a vote? I would like an answer. Second topic. As you know, I have raised a legal challenge on the inclusion ballot question that will raise property taxes in Littleton by 9.25 mils. The response from South Metro to my challenge was that I acted prematurely, that the ballot language has not been set, even though South Metro Board specifically stated more than once at their May 2nd meeting that they were approving the ballot language. Littleton has hired an outside attorney, Mr. Goddick, to watch the proceedings. Acting on behalf of the city and council, Mr. Goddick sent me an email that states, how do I turn it on, Wendy? Oh. There it goes. It reads, "The City of Littleton has hired me to address these issues, and employees and elected officials for Littleton have directed me to remain your sole point of contact. Accordingly, please do not contact any employees or elected officials of Littleton with respect to this matter." So according to Mr. Goddick, you either instructed him to limit my freedom of speech or you did not. If I am to believe him, and I should be able to believe your attorney, you did provide him instructions. However, because I've spoken to a few of you, I know that there wasn't a meeting with Mr. Goddick, and you did not instruct him as he stated. So Mr. Goddick was not being honest when he wrote me, and his dishonesty should concern you as it does me. Mr. Goddick does not control my freedom of speech, so I will speak to all of you tonight on this matter. I encourage you to read the motions filed with the court. You might be surprised to know that the ballot question and the South Metro, that you and the South Metro Board approved in the agreement, is no more than words on a paper that may as well not be in the agreement. The actual ballot question, according to South Metro, will be written by their designated election official, and it will not go back to their board or you for approval. There's no basis in law for the ballot question to be written by the DEO. In fact, the law requires the governing body to write the ballot question. You should be as concerned as I am about this. A simple challenge to a ballot language has turned into a legal battle with four high-priced attorneys and a crazy made-up process for creating ballot language that has no basis in the law. You will not find it in the Uniform Election Code. If you want to know both sides of the argument, I would be more than happy to discuss my position in great detail with you. I used to have high regard for South Metro, and now I'm very concerned about how they will deal with issues raised by Littleton citizens in the future.
Carol, your time's up.
Their response to this challenge does not bode well for Littleton.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments? Please come on down.
Good evening. I'm John Paul Malik. I live at 15 Bradbury Lane. I've lived at, the address will be three years in September. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I lived in downtown Denver, enjoyed the density. I lived in Platt Park in an R2 neighborhood. I loved my neighbors, didn't care for the addition of alley houses, but that's the wave of a high-density neighborhood in a transit zone. So we moved to Littleton. Being a third-generation native boy, that was a bit of a surprise that I ended up in Littleton, but here I am, and love our home and neighbors in Bradbury Lane. I was surprised in walking my children to access on the Lee Gulch Trail down my neighborhood to see so many cars in front of the house in question where there's an Airbnb, and seemed a little odd that there was so much traffic as of late, and would implore the council to look in. To zoning, to protect my home, to protect the neighborhood, and to protect our quiet neighborhoods. I love higher density, and I've lived there, and I see a point in it, but I moved out of high-density in our two neighborhoods to Littleton so that my children would safely walk the streets. So I appreciate your consideration and looking into this. I appreciate my neighborhood speaking today, and thank you, city council, for the opportunity to speak on this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so you know, one, public comment is closed. I will, at this point, let the public know that we do not take action on items that are not on, we do not take official action on items that are not on the published agenda. It is a violation of open meetings. We do, however, have the opportunity to make recommendations to staff to move things to another meeting where we can take more action. This is an opportunity, I think, for us to respond to your concerns about the Airbnb. I will say that this is not a new issue. This is something that has been kind of coming in and out of discussions with council for quite a few years. And as you've mentioned, a number of cities have been dealing with this. It is a, it's a hairy issue. It's a sticky issue. We are familiar with the Golden. I did forward that finding to the council earlier this week. So there are cities that are having some success, getting through some of the muck and the mire as you walk through land use issues. And so I think it's not a matter of reinventing the wheel, but it is definitely a concern that, I appreciate your voicing this, we have all, council has, without a doubt, agrees that one of our greatest treasures in our communities is our neighborhoods, and we have a responsibility to protect those neighborhoods. And what you guys have come to appreciate is your quality of life in the community. And so balancing that with the rights of others is really where it comes down to our job. So, city manager, I know you've spent some time considering some options on this and some suggestions that you may be able to help council and help the public understand how we may be able to move forward. Do you want to share some of your thoughts?
Yes, if I may, mayor and council. You kind of touched on this issue here. The fact is that much of this country has been wrestling with this particular issue here at local government levels for quite some time. In our state, if you look to the resort areas, they've actually taken on Airbnbs and VBROs here for quite some time. So they've plowed some interesting ground with that particular issue. And as you said, we have our own history here. Let me just kind of share some of that. The, for the last three years, there has been interpretation by staff, my predecessor, and quite honestly, the predecessor here to our city attorney, made a decision here that we will allow them, according to our zoning code, the code as it exists today. And so we made our own interpretation here, here just recently. So we reinforced the same decision that was made three years ago. And so we have a practice of allowing them, and to date, we have approximately nine with two new applications that have been submitted. We do use our existing codes. I am troubled a little bit that one of my communications here somehow got misrepresented to the fact that we do not enforce our zoning code. It's not true. In fact, we do. We have an appointment that we've made here with the one Airbnb in question to meet with them, to actually talk about some of the issues the neighborhood has raised. We've even offered a meeting here to this particular neighborhood, and as of yesterday, we had one person actually accept that offer. And so we do take this serious. But honestly, if I lived next to something like this with our existing code, I'd be troubled as well. And so I acknowledge the fact that our code here is not serving us well. Now, we do issue business licenses, and we've done that again for the past three years. And so it's not true that if we hear a complaint about something, that we do not somehow enforce the code. We do enforce it. We have a history of it. It's not very active, but we have- It's not very active, but we have code enforcement that actually works with these particular properties to sort out the issues. And so for the last three years, that's what we've been doing. Now, next week, I've mentioned this to council, staff is presenting to you kind of a schedule here for several code issues. And at your direction, we've been putting together this presentation here for the last several months, and we are about to take on a series of code issues here that, in my opinion, is probably historic for this community. We recognize, we have a long history of things that need to be addressed in our code, and this has been established long before my time. However, this is really your opportunity to decide what are your priorities? What in the code do you decide that are really the top issues here? And so we are prepared next week to talk about how Airbnb may fit into that. And specifically, I would suggest that the earliest that we could probably add this to the agenda would be the study session of August 14th. That would allow staff some time with the city attorney's office to talk about all the different options that may exist here for us. I've been kind of watching the city manager listserv here for the last few years, and it's been lit up by this issue. And so I know that it is controversial. I know that it is emotional. And I think that we need to lay out for the city council kind of perhaps a short-term strategy, and perhaps a longer-term approach that we may have to be aware of. I do suggest that we have code issues that need to be defined, because right now, it is ambiguous, as one of the residents have pointed out, and it's not serving us. I think, too, with all these options that we present to you, obviously, we want to share with you the pros and cons of each one of those, based on what other cities have been doing, and as many people have pointed out here, in fact, the article that the mayor shared here just recently, not only Golden, but Wheat Ridge, Lakewood, there's all sorts of cities now that are having to take this thing up. So I think we are prepared here, from a staff perspective, to kind of start to assemble this information, and be more than willing to talk, not only to this neighborhood, but quite honestly, any neighborhood that has an issue with this, so that we are more prepared here in a larger community discussion about how to approach this. It is complex. There are people who obviously have invested in this. I think there's nuances in here at the staff level that we've identified that I think could be very difficult from an enforcement perspective, but that's the kind of detail we would start to lay out at a study session. So those would be my comments, unless there's questions from council, or maybe the city attorney needs to add something.
Peggy. So I appreciate that it will take time to put this together for us to study, but given the effect this has every single day on residents, and the, well, just say that much, is there no way we might speed up looking at this, even if we have to do like we're doing tonight and have a double meeting, a double study session, a regular meeting?
Well, I think that would be, council member, I think that would be my point of the meeting next week, is to share with you that larger schedule, so you get to see kinds of the code issues that we believe we've already got in process. So some things have already been progressing. We've been having some conversation with council, some with the planning commission. So we're on a track to actually execute those. And I think that's what we would like to share with you next week, and then look for other things that we could delay and push out. In fact, that's what would have to happen if we talk about Airbnb. And we've identified today some issues that we could actually suggest to you to delay. So we are prepared for that.
So since they raised a related issue, given the use of the property with the weeds that they say are out of control, could we see if we can at least get the weeds rigorously?
I think that was a different property that was referred to.
Well, I know, but it's in, I thought it was in general area.
Any code issue, we'd be more than happy to pursue. That's what code enforcement's all about. So if we do have a complaint, or at least an area in question, that's what obviously code enforcement does, and be more than happy to go out and investigate that and enforce our code.
Yeah. Council, I would suggest that we move for, council member Alrod.
Quick comment. I just wanted to share with council as well that I reached out to Mark earlier today and to Steve to make them aware of a project that had been initiated through the planning commission, which was the review of the land use table, which helped to address some of the definitions that perhaps needed to be more contemporary in nature, et cetera. What that project also did was identify potentially some of the gaps where clarity did not exist. So given that you are bringing forward next week, I believe, just some of the overall code considerations that we'd want to take a look at, I encourage us to also bring forward that land use project and revisit that again, that was conducted not only by the planning commission, there was a citizen advisory committee, et cetera. And I just want us to be able to become more proactive in some of these concerns than reactive like we are now, and I think that's a good starting point as well.
I would also, if I may, I agree, council, what your plan is is fine, I think, given what's on our table, and also the next couple months, we have some meetings that have been canceled due to a variety of things, so we'll get this in. I would also encourage, if the city attorney can have something prepared for us at the study session, that we discuss the moratorium. And moratoriums are pretty severe. But the reason I would like to have a little bit more information on that is because our schedule is, there is so much in it, and so if we cannot get to this in a timely fashion, how can we at least not let the problem get any worse while we're working on a solution? So if you could bring some comments or some ideas of what the pros and cons of something like that would be also next week, that would be great.
Mayor, council, I'd be pleased to do that. In regards to council member Alrod's question, I do have the Clarion report. In fact, the PDO ordinance that you recently adopted was one of the recommendations, the Clarion study, and the upcoming subdivision code is another recommendation coming to you that Clarion had addressed. So we are looking at that, and that is going to be certainly one of the resources that we use throughout all of these code amendments in looking at how to progress.
Very much.
Okay.
One short comment, sorry.
All right.
I know we have a process for dealing with rental properties and nuisance rental properties, and maybe if you could take a look at that to see how we can use that with ABMBs. Now.
Mayor Potem, I'd be pleased to do that.
Yeah, it sounds like something needs to happen quick.
Mayor, if you may.
Just a quick comment. Something else that was on, that one of our citizens commented on, your legislative procedures. Quite honestly, they got dropped inadvertently, did not know that. We updated your webpage. It'll go up tomorrow morning.
It was my fault.
Okay, it's here. No problem. We'll get it fixed, and we'll be good.
I put the new documents up, and we just wiped out everything else.
That's fine.
I will fix it tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. And then I would also ask, based on our action regarding public comments, city attorney, would you mind addressing Ms. Brizak's concern about taking action during comments, council comments versus public comment? Would you mind doing that in a written format?
Mayor, council, that will be on your next agenda as a report back from the city attorney.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we will move to consent agenda items. Do you guys want to stay? If you don't want to stay, we'll give you a few minutes to go ahead and exit. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Lock doors and don't let people leave until we do.
That's a good move. It's a good move.
Okay, we should lock the doors. We should stay. We want to stay.
How you doing?
We're doing good.
Unfortunately.
We are on consent agenda. So our first item on consent agenda is resolution granting permanent and temporary easements to Denver Water for purposes of relocating a water line along the west side of Aladee Street in city property. Next consent agenda item is a resolution approving the quasi-judicial rules of procedure. The next is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation District, RTD, regarding reimbursement funding for the mineral station area framework planning process. Item E is a motion to appoint William Hopping to the Littleton Invest for Tomorrow Board, and item E is approval of the May 15, 2018 regular meeting minutes. I need a motion.
A move to accept consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E.
And a second?
Second.
Council member Valdez, second, ready to vote?
So I have one comment. If there's a spelling error that actually is a different meaning, should I say that now in something?
No, you can tell the clerk after the meeting. She'll take care of it. She'll take care of it. Yeah, that's fine. Ready to vote?
Yep.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we have nothing under general business. We have no ordinances on second reading, and so now we move to council comments and report. City manager?
No report, mayor.
Okay, city attorney?
It's attached to your agenda.
Thank you. And we'll start with council member Alrod.
I don't have anything to report.
Council member Fay. No report. Council member Flector.
Oh, I do. I attended the museum board meeting last night, and just like to report that attendance is up 15% year-to-date so far, which is good. The museum's summer concert series begins this month. The first concert is June 13th, and it's Dakota Blonde. And Director Timmons mentioned that they are, or gave us an update about the moving forward priority-based budgeting. They've said that they finished the self-scoring, and now are working on peer review, so hopefully we'll get to see that sometime soon. And I want to thank all the citizens who come and speak at public comment at these meetings. But I would ask citizens who are requesting changes to motions or ordinances to send those to council ahead of time, so we're not seeing them the first time about 30 seconds before we're voting on them. So I think that would be highly beneficial for the way we operate the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And to add on to your museum report, the little lambs have been born. This is the best time. Go see the baby lambs. Council member Valdez.
No report.
Council member Driscoll.
Yes, last week, I attended the Arepa Community College Pyramex Education Program. Their committee, advisory committee, gets together twice a year. I just want to say what a great job Dennis and his whole staff does down there. And for anybody watching on TV, it seems like more the younger people, that would be a really neat program to consider getting involved with. This year, they had a last graduation class, they had 99.9% graduation rate, and just doing some really good things at ACC. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Cole.
Please, I'll pile on, having taught there 35 years. That's a great place, affordable place to start either two-year or four-year, or go all the way up the line as far as you want. It's great. There's great transfer scholarship opportunity for students. I'm saying this so you can tell your friends and family, whatever, because too many four-year schools, the students flunk out partying in their freshman or sophomore year, and then they're needing to repopulate the classes with particularly the major courses at the junior year. And so there are incredible scholarship transfer opportunities. So anybody might want to talk to me about it, or talk to people at ACC, but thanks for sharing that. And no more, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have one announcement I agreed to make. The Friends of the Littleton Canine, we have two canines and obviously two officers, they are having a fundraiser on June 20th from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Garlic Knot. It's $10 per person for all the pizza, garlic knots, and soda and tea that you can eat and drink. No doggy bags allowed. Both of the canines and their handlers will be there. And so if you haven't had an opportunity to experience the canines and their handlers, it's pretty incredible, and it would be worth going over there for some charity and pizza. I don't have any other comment this evening. At adjournment, we will reconvene in the community room for our study session, and we'll do that at 7:40. So we'll have a 10-minute split between the two, and we will adjourn this meeting. Great. Excellent.